But we're gonna go ahead and get started. I thought I was gonna have a couple more council people here, maybe they'll show up or not, to thank all of you for coming in. Clark, would you start us by reading the role, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole, Mr. Getty.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Motion for the agenda, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, thank you. Again, thank you guys. You know, we did this last year in Waterloo. I think you do it in Cedar Falls on a regular basis, but we did it for the first time in Waterloo last year, and it was, it was very well received. So, I appreciate you guys coming this time. I'm sorry I don't have a full council, but people sometimes don't always show up, but you know, it's a good deal. And I think it's good for us to have a dialogue. We kinda learn what you guys are giving up for, for the session. You kind of learn a few things about us. And if you don't mind, I would kinda like to start with you guys introducing. I don't think you, we all know you. Maybe we have department heads here today, so Jeff, why don't you start and just kinda tell us briefly who you are and so forth, then we'll get into the, maybe.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the council for having us here today. I do think it is beneficial. I see the state role with the local governments as a partnership, and believe that we should approach policy that way. Congratulations to those who are retiring and leaving public service, and congratulations to the newly electeds on the council that'll take office at the beginning of the year. We believe Waterloo is a strong community and strong because of your leadership. Jeff Danielson, State Senator for this area. I represent most of West Waterloo, roughly Kimball Avenue to the west, and all of Cedar Falls and Hudson as well, and the surrounding communities. I chair state government in the senate, which deals with all the wonderful subjects like pensions, and gambling, and alcohol policy, and professional licensing, all of those things that nobody really pays attention to until something goes wrong. So, we chaired that committee now for three years, and we'll look forward to partnerships with local governments. I'll chair an efficiency bill that we will look at again this year, and there are some opportunities there to create some partnerships with the local government. Vice Chair of Veterans Affairs, which is very important to a lot of veterans in our community in this area, and a lot of programs that we help support for them. Vice Chair of Appropriations, the overall appropriations committee, and Vice Chair of Admin and Reg. Budget, which deals with roughly 25 state agencies. Happy to be a member with Senator Doxler on economic growth, and also a member of Transportation Committee. So, we cover a wide range of policies. Look forward to your questions today, and hopefully we learn together.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I share Jeff's, congratulations to those that are newly elected, and also to retiring. And this is always a good session for us to learn, you know, what the city's up to. So, when we get into Des Moines, and we're dealing with subjects that relate to our city government and our home communities, we've got a better idea of what's going on. So, these input sessions are very important. I, I serve, I'm in my, going into my 18th year in the Iowa Legislature. I am the Assistant Majority Leader. I chair the budget for the Department of Workforce Development, Cultural Affairs, and the Economic Development Authority, and the PRR Board. I serve on the Ways and Means Committee, Human Resources, and Economic Development, where I share that with Jeff, and we usually get some pretty important bills that we work on together. And also, I'm on the Business and Labor Committee. So, I spend, my primary focus really in the Iowa Legislature is on economic development issues and work on, work on those. So, again, thank you.
Very good, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Maguire and Council, and folks that are stepping down. Thanks for your service to the community. And my name is Bob Kressig, and I'm a state representative from Cedar Falls. And I'm, I'm unique in the perspective that I'm, I'm a urban legislator. I, with the redistricting that occurred, my district is just within the city limits. Yeah. So, there's not many of us in the capital that, that have that. So, look forward to moving forward with some of the issues that I'm sure we're gonna hear about today. I've probably heard about them already, and look forward to that. I serve on Commerce. I've been on that committee for a few years. Local government, actually, I was on the Land and Zoning Commission in Cedar Falls for a few years, so kinda know and understand the issues that we face. And Public Safety Committee, that I'm ranking member of that committee. And the, some of the issues that we're dealing with in public safety, and I know that you are too, is public communications. I serve on the State Interrupt Committee, trying to deal with, with the issues with improving our public sa, public communication system. And I don't know, maybe we'll hear about that today. I think it's a very important issue. And then, I serve on the Economic Development Committee, Budget Subcommittee with Senator Doxler, and we made some really good strides last session, particularly dealing with our skilled workforce. That's a major issue, and I'm sure you guys are, and y'all's, everybody in the city is paying close attention to that. So, thanks for having me here, and look forward to your questions.
Thanks, Bob. Jeff?
Mayor, hello.
How are you?
I have to acknowledge Harold Getty. You're retiring? It's about time. I can joke with Harold. Love him to death. He and I served on council. You've been here a long time, Harold.
Thirty years.
Yes, yes. Well, congratulations to you. You live in my district, just don't run from my seat. In any event, and it's just, it's just, don't care. It's good to just see everybody. Bob, I served with. Steve, I didn't, but of course, Ron and Councilman Hardy did not, but Mayor Clark, we served together, and David, it's good to see you too, and, and all the department heads here today. I think I sat right there where Ron is, I think, at the time. But any event, Deb Barry, been in the Iowa Legislature not longer than I planned. It's going on my sixth, my sixth term. Be 12 years soon. My committees are just awesome. I'm ranking member of the International Relations Committee, which I get to travel a lot and see what other countries are doing. And I am also in public safety, serving with Bob Kressig, who's our ranking member on the Democratic side. I'm also on Labor, Environmental Protection, and as you can see, none of those committees, although they, they have some, obviously, some impact to cities, obviously, but the direct issues that come, that affect cities, I guess I just pretty much get to vote on those, so I'm as equally important as those guys. So, it's good to be here today. Again, excited to hear what your questions are going to be for us. I consider this a time to really learn what we need to focus on for next sessions, since we all are part of this community, whether or not we represent Hudson, and Cedar Falls, and some of those areas. It's still, we're still, it's important that we know what, what you need from us, so we can make sure we support those issues. So.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Paul?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks for inviting me and the rest of us. And I also look forward to your questions and hearing from you, what your issues are as we go into this next session. Walt Rogers, I represent West Waterloo, South Cedar Falls, and Hudson, along with Voorhees, so kinda pretty much the southwest corner of Black Hawk County. And my committees are Appropriations, Education, Economic Growth, and Transportation. And I also serve on Derby's Committee, but I don't get to travel as much as you do for some reason, but I think we should change that. Anyway.
Appropriate the money.
Yeah. So, so some pretty important committees with a lot going on in there, and so I look forward to hearing what your issues are, so that obviously Waterloo can be represented as best possible. So.
Very good. Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it. Why don't we do the same thing with council? Just very briefly, just kinda name and your ward, and kinda maybe where the ward boundaries are, if you know them. And let's just go around real quickly before we, so that everybody has an idea who you are. David?
So, David Jones, Ward One. So, I guess I share some area with Walt there. So, it's pretty much what southwest Waterloo, going up Ainsborough with a jig into Church Row mostly, and that whole side bordering Cedar Falls up to Rainbow Drive.
Okay. Harold?
I'm Harold Getty, Ward Three. I've been at large for the city of Waterloo, and I'm at the end of this year, ending my 30-year career as a councilperson.
Very good.
Good to see all of you.
I'm Quentin Hart, represent Fourth Ward, and I'm also Mayor Pro Tim. And Harold's already told me, he served with, with you, Representative Berry, and many other folks that are on the council now, but out of all of them, I am by far his most favorite councilperson that he's served with. So, that's also, that's also another one of my duties. So.
All right.
You didn't tell me that? Okay, I shouldn't have made that public. But thank you for being here today. Looking forward to the dialogue.
I'm Ron Welper, Ward Five, inner-city west side.
Steve Schmidt, and I'm one of two council members at large, so I've got the entire city.
Bob Greenwood, serving my 12th year on the City Council at large, and two more meetings after tonight.
Yeah, that's right.
You're not counting, are you?
No.
Not counting.
Bob said the same thing about me, too.
You better take a dose of humility, people.
Yeah, and we have two new council people, so you know. Tom Lynn.
Raise your arm or something there, hand, is the, will take Bob's place at the, at large, and Pat Morrissey will be taking over Ward Three. I was gonna say, take Harold's place, but nobody's gonna take Harold's place, so he'll be, he'll be moving into Ward Three, and we'll be setting up here at January, whatever that first meeting is in January. So, so anyway, guys, now that we got the formalities out of way, I don't know, I don't have an agenda. I, I think maybe if we can just start by any one of you that just start something, and we also have the department heads here, and I know we have some questions, but maybe we could start by you guys, just somebody speak up. What do you expect from the session this year? Last year, you know, budget's been a big topic, TIF has been a big topic, pensions are a big topic. Where do you expect us to go this year, particularly with things that are gonna have direct effect on the cities? Somebody speak up.
Yeah, I can, I can start out. I know that as we get into the month of December where we're at now, our individual caucuses start meeting and really talk about, you know, what the upcoming plans and goals are for the legislative session. So, we're, we're a little premature on that, but I do know that the leadership between the House and the senate have been meeting, Speaker Paulson and, and Majority Leader Mike Ronstadt. And they have been talking about our session and, and willingness to try to get done early for a change. And usually what happened in the last three sessions with the split legislature, we have, in the senate and in the House, we started the bills ma, in the senate, we put what we thought were the appropriate funding levels on, a little bit higher than what the governor had recommended, and the House went below the governor's recommendation, and that really put a large gap between the House and the senate in negotiations. And it took us quite a while to work through that process. And I think this legislative session, the Speaker and the Majority Leader are really looking at trying to start as closer to the middle. And so, we'll have a better opportunity to kinda resolve those disagreements and get out of the legislative session on time or a little bit early. It's election year. I know that we have people running for Congress that are in the legislature, and other members who are looking at running, running for those congressional seats. And so, all that kinda adds up to missing a lot of time on the campaign trails, and it's more important in election year that we get our business done early and take a look at what's going on. I think that we've had interim committees that meet during legislative sessions, and they're really kind of committees that look at possible bills that we're gonna run, issues that didn't maybe get resolved in the last legislative session, and kinda checking up on, on some of the things. And one was really looking at, as Bob talked a little bit, about skilled worker issues. And I still think that economic development is gonna be a primary focus in skilled worker issues, and worker issues as a whole. Some of the research that's been coming out of Iowa State really showed that Iowans, even if that we would take all our young graduates from our high schools and our colleges, and they fill the baby boom or spots out of people that are retiring, retiring from City Council, with younger people, we're not gonna have enough Iowans to really fill that, that, those job opportunities. And that was basically research. Well, the Department of Economic Development, now the Economic Development Authority, has been surveying Iowa businesses, and what they're finding out is, the number one thing that's holding back our economy and economy across the state is work, is the workforce and a shortage of workers, and not to mention the skill levels that go with that. So, we expect that we're gonna not only look at those issues and see what we can do to try to move some of that forward. And in order to get new Iowans, we have to make sure that Iowa's a healthy and attractive place. And so, my efforts are gonna be continuing to do the things that I've been working on to make Iowa attractive to young people. You know, Waterloo, Cedar Falls is designated as a great place because of our trails, water trails, river trails. We need to continue to work on that, promote recreational opportunities, continue with the historic preservation, try to get people living back more downtown, do more with our rivers. I got an interim next week on river quality, trying to improve water quality in Iowa to make it more attractive. I was just out to the, out to the malls this weekend on Sunday, waiting for the crowds to disappear, and I found out that, yeah, they just about sold out of kayaks, kayaks everywhere in town. The people, and young people wanna use our rivers, and we need to work, work on those things. The brownfields, grainfields legislation, we've been improving that every year. That's important to our cities to take care of some of the areas that need revitalization. And I think the Economic Development Authority is looking at revamping that program and trying to make it not necessarily a first come, first served, but to really look at targeting their limited resources on the brownfields dollars, which would be based off of projects and economic impact for our communities, so we can get, you know, a better, better handle on it. Last year, the legislature worked on, on putting language on our Main Street programs. I think those are important. We put a million dollars out across the state, and when you spread that out, that isn't a lot, but I think it's a great first step. It's the most ever appropriated from the legislature to the Main Street program directly. And we're gonna look at the outcomes from that and try to put more resources into it. And I know Waterloo, Cedar Falls both have active Main Street programs, and they're important to our community. So, Department of Cultural Affairs, we try to put more resources into that, so our communities can have more events, have the kinda things that attract people to our towns, you know, with festivals and those kinda things to help support some of the costs for music and kinda events like that, because, you know, talented people can really live anywhere. And if you can land them in your communities, 'cause they're attractive and friendly place, and they've got the kinda things that make our communities attractive, will help with that workforce shortage. And business always follows talent. So, you know, I think those are kinda the areas that I'm gonna be focusing on, and I know there's some language about there. Again, people relooking and visiting TIF. I don't see us going too far with that. We're still collecting the data that we had, and I'm supporter of the TIF legislation. You know that I've worked on that bill and tried to pare it down somewhat from what the House was trying to do, and trying to, let's, let's get the data and do a little better job of taking a look at that. So, then also, we're gonna be tracking the legislation that we passed last year dealing with a commercial property tax, and there's still people giving us input on that about valuations, and how that impacts that, could impact the revenues for the city. And we wanna keep a good eye on that, too, 'cause we wanna make sure, we wanna make sure that our cities and counties have the revenue that they need. So.
Thank you.
Covered a lot there, so.
Let me fill the coffees go.
I'm gonna go ahead, if that's all right. You go. And I'm gonna agree with Bill. I think, you know, we are hearing on both sides of the aisle that the workforce, skilled workforce is something that's very important, and we need to continue to focus on that. And we're hearing from all different avenues that that is one of the needs in Iowa. So, I think that'll be a bipartisan effort to keep working on that. And, and I agree, there may be some talk about tweaking TIF. I'm, I'm not hearing much of that, so I would, I would foresee us not doing much with that this next coming session. And you mentioned, Mayor Clark, about pensions. I think there's talk of that. There could be something. I'm not sure if that, if that'll gain traction or not. So, there could be discussion as far as that. Bill also touched on the property tax reform, and obviously, the, the big three that we put forth last session will, will be looked at, and I think will be in the process of tweaking all of those. And Senator Doxler obviously knows a lot more in that area as far as property tax reform, and what we'll be doing to make sure that the cities get backfill that, that we talked about. So, I think we're, I wanna make sure that that takes place. I obviously worked a lot on the, the healthcare reform bill, and was on that interim committee, and proud to say that I think what's happening in Iowa is, is, you know, far beyond what's happening in the rest of the country. In fact, I, I was at a National Health Summit and with representatives all over the country. And actually, there is a, a person directly from Kathleen Sibylle's office there who spoke, and I got up and asked a question, and, and that person, after, after I talked about what we did in Iowa, they actually recommended, they told everybody in the room to go talk to me, because Iowa was doing some outside of the box and revolutionary things with their, with their health plan. And, and so, it was a bipartisan effort. We did some good things, and proud to say that actually, we already have 63,000 people enrolled in the Iowa Health and Wellness Plan, because the Iowa Cares people just automatically rolled over to that. And so, we may have more signed up than the whole country does at this point. So, in that respect, I think there'll be some tweaking again with that bill, but I think, you know, depending on what happens nationally, we're obviously, that, that is a big if. But I think Iowa's in real good shape there. And also, I'm on the Education Committee with our education reform. Again, I think we'll be looking at tweaks to that bill, and some of the things that superintendents have talked to me about is, is again, you know, teacher evaluations and things like that. So, we'll, we'll be looking at all those things to, to try to make those bills better. So.
Very good.
If I could just add, Walt, Walt is right about the Iowa Health and Wellness Initiative. You know, of all the states, Republican states led by Republican governors, Governor Branstad was probably the first governor who, you know, welcomed the Affordable Care Act through the Iowa Health and Wellness Initiative. And you're right, there's about 63,000 Iowans already due to that rollover from the Iowa Cares, which ends officially the 31st of, of December. And when you talk about skilled workforce, you gotta have, have healthy, healthy people. And making sure that folks have health insurance, which say, of course, it will eliminate the, you know, the charity care that many hospitals face, and that's something all of us as taxpayers, you know, we pay for. When people go to the emergency rooms for coughs, or headaches, or whatever the case might be, the Iowa Health and Wellness Plan and the Affordable Care Act will now prevent that, because many people have to now, you know, have, get a primary care physician. And again, all that saves all of us as taxpayers from having to pay for that. If I can just also briefly mention, as I talked about, some of the committee, committees I served on, one of the things that we do, we were doing on the, the International Relations Committee, which is very, very important to the Midwest, is we are partners with Canada, and Canada, and Iowa. We have a very good relationship in terms of trade, agriculture trade, as well as a lot of automotive kinds of things. So, we are, I mean, that's something big. Keep your eyes open, because it'll affect all of us eventually. On public safety, I don't think we're gonna be doing too much in terms of, of what we see with incarceration, but I always like to bring up the high incarceration rates that we have here in Iowa, because again, that is all taxpayer, that's what we are taking, you know, we are putting a lot of our taxpayer dollars into that, too. So, we're all affected by that. So, we, I like the fact that the Women's Resource Center is now, will be opening real soon, which will take a burden off of, of the taxpayer as well, well, in terms of, you know, moving those less dangerous criminals, or less dangerous individuals, excuse me, to a place where they can get more programs and services, and then moving more dangerous folks where they need to be. So, I think that's gonna be huge for us, too. So, I just wanted to talk about that a little bit.
Very good.
Thank you, Deb. Mr. Mayor, trouble going last? Is darn dear, I think you were gonna say.
Well.
I defer to my roommate. I defer to my roommate of 10 years. Go ahead, I'll, I'll finish.
You wanna talk about that, or not?
Well, one of the areas that I think hasn't been mentioned yet is education funding, particularly the K-12 system. Went through an interesting process last session with Lawable Growth. Lawable Growth wasn't approved based on the law that we have. It's 30 days after the governor makes his, his state of the state of speech. It took till the end of session, but schools are gonna, you know, were able to get additional funding. We did make significant changes with regard to education reforms. Talked a little bit about, oh, we put things in place like the school day from hours to, from days to hours. Talked about collaboration between teachers, and all those things are trying to be worked out with the current K-12 school districts. And, you know, I think there's probably gonna be some tweaks going on there, because, you know, oftentimes, the, the local area knows probably what's best for, for K-12, and not always the state. Then, the postsecretary level, you and I, our, our community colleges, we, we, we've got a ranking here in the country of having a high student debt, and it's not good. And, you know, the three state universities are what they are, state universities, but the majority of the funding to operate those comes from tuition. And you and I is an important part of this local economy here, Waterloo, Cedar Falls, and we're gonna have to look at additional funding to, to go back and correct some of the cuts that were made in 08. You know, we had the recession and the downturn in the economy. And, you know, I look forward to having those discussions and debates. It wasn't that long ago. It wasn't that long ago that there were talk about eliminating some really good economic development programs within the universities, Institute for Decision-Making. The proposal was just defund that. The metal casting lab, which, by the way, is probably one of the premier places in the country for founders to come and get resources from. It's significant. And we just got the 3D printer.
3D printers added on to that.
You know, and it wasn't that long ago, the discussion with Capitol was just, let's just get rid of it. And, you know, we didn't agree with that and fought hard to prevent those things. So, I think it's important for us to, and the K-12 systems that exist within our metro area are significant to making sure people are educated and understand and move forward with, you know, job potential and opportunities. The idea that we're building more prisons, you know, I think the cost of that, it's about $30,000 a person. We have over 8,000 people currently locked up in our prisons, just put to the map. It's a significant economic piece. And so, Deb talked a little bit about some of the reforms with regard to our sentencing. We worked on some of that last year and weren't able to go forward, but I really do believe that if you're a nonviolent offender, and you could be in, like what we have here, community-based corrections with some supervision, it's a lot less expensive, and I think the benefits to society are there. So, I really do, hopefully, and we're having a forum tonight talking about those very issues at the Unitarian Universalist. So, it is an important issue, and I'm glad Deb brought it up. So, thank you.
Jeff, I don't know what you're gonna talk about.
I'll try to talk about new subjects.
Okay.
And I also want to reiterate the expectations for the session. Bill is right. If you blink, you're liable to miss the session. It'll probably be that short for a couple of reasons. One, the second-year session is always shorter than the first by code. It's scheduled to be 100 days.
Let me ask you something. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, you know, Bill stated about that, that you're trying to start closer.
Yeah.
Is there agreement on that on both sides of the aisle to do that?
Exactly. There's another reason for that as well, right? So, the session's going to be shorter anyways because of the Constitution. The leadership has already moved it up by two weeks in the negotiations over the rules that we'll have to vote on right away in the first week. If that passes, then you will literally shorten it up.
Okay.
By a couple of weeks. But keep in mind, we also do a hybrid two-year budget. So, much of the discussion in the budget goes on in the first year. And then, there's a few of them where we reserve about half of that second-year budget for a full discussion again. But by and large, the budget committees don't have to go through all that work again. That's how you end up closer in the first place. And politically, if you want to get there, that's a good thing, too. I think Iowans should be proud that Iowa is one of only a handful of states with a split legislature. Democrats in control of Senate, Republicans in control of the House. There's only a few states like that in the country. And in a year like last year, when the political mood can sometimes be contentious, we emerged with some fairly significant policies that were passed in a bipartisan way, education reform, the largest tax cut in Iowa history, four-plus billion over the next two years, most of it in property taxes, but some of it in income tax for those that are on the edge of poverty in the middle class, hope to get into the middle class. So, we're proud of those accomplishments. I think, given all of those factors, that means a shorter session, whichever one of those factors you think is the most important. And so, there isn't going to be a lot of opportunities for creativity, for working on bills, past deadlines. Those things will all be sort of known in the first month, month and a half. Some of the things that I'm focused on, one is pensions. I'm chair of the committee for the four pensions, and we have four of them in Iowa. I-Pers, 411, which is police and fire, P-O-Rs, which is basically the troopers, and then the judges' pensions. And to me, the number-one problem facing Iowa's pensions is the state's inability to keep its promises. 411 is Exhibit A in that sense. The state is 50 million behind in its contribution. You all have kept up your promise. The employees have kept up their promise by giving their contributions, but the state has really backed out of their promise and not kept it. We have a surplus. There's some other good news. We still have one of the healthiest surpluses in Iowa history. We believe that it's time for the state, not just in 411, but the other pension systems, to keep its promise and to be the partner that it originally promised to be. Pension Board agrees with that. They reached out to me as chair of the committee. That will be their only recommendation coming out of Pension Committee this fall, that the state actually keep its original promise of 3.79% of the overall.
Isn't that a different stance than they took last year?
No, it's the same proposal they came up with last year. It basically says there's the original promise, not keep it. That calibrates to today's dollars of about 10 million total. So, if you're looking at about an $800 million ending balance reserve on top of 650 or so in our other economic reserve funds, there is resources at the state level to do that, and I think it's a good policy. One of the side benefits of that is it's a dollar-for-dollar property tax reduction. If the state puts a dollar into the 411 system, the Board will require a dollar less of the cities around the state. And today, that's about 20 million total. So, if we put in our 10 million, it roughly reduces by half the property tax asking statewide. You kill two birds with one stone. You shore up our systems, and you maintain the partnership that was originally intended. I'm also working on some changes in the EMS policy for Iowa. In many ways, EMS, emergency services, first responders, and your paramedics is a forgotten service. It's not required, like police and fire services at the local level, so it's forgotten there. And it's also fragmented in the way that we fund it and service delivery. So, for example, you cannot set up a regional service in Iowa without going through, pardon me, Jim, a lot of attorneys and 28E agreements, and eventually, somebody says no in that process. So, you don't have regional service in Iowa, which I think is something we need to start to look at. You're facing that with your Evansdale contracts and your other contracts in the area. So, there's some areas, I think, that we can modernize EMS in Iowa, reduce the cost that you have for training. I think the state should be a partner in the training piece. You have to keep up with all of those qualifications as a service provider. And actually, I think we need to expand the ability for regional service because we're seeing a lot of places in Iowa, second and third 911 calls are not being answered. And I think Iowans, no matter where you live, expect a certain level of service when they have a heart attack or they fall a hill. And it doesn't have to be four-minute response everywhere, but we should have a response if 911's called, and there's places in Iowa where that's not happening right now. So, I think there's an appetite for EMS. I think that'll be beneficial to the cities as a service provider on some of the things that we're looking at. And then, for me, I think finally, the sleeper issue in this session is going to be transportation and infrastructure funding. We can't kick the can down the road anymore, and there's a number of factors that I think should drive our decision. One, we don't get as much for every dollar today that we raise as we used to. The gas tax hasn't been raised since 1989 in Iowa, so we're really trying to build 21st-century roads with 20th-century money. That catches up eventually. We also are seeing all of the technologies in transportation are reducing our ability to raise revenue through the gas tax. So, it can't be the only answer in the future because everything that's going on in automotive industry is actually making it harder to raise revenue through the gas tax because of better miles per gallon and other technologies, and also hybrid cars as well. I think we need to have a serious conversation about it. We kicked the can down the road. I've been supportive of additional revenues. I've already voted that way in the Senate. And for us, it's very, very important. We have a thing called University Avenue, which most people don't realize is actually a state highway right now. And if that relationship doesn't change and the DOT doesn't get additional revenue, University Avenue will always be last in line for state funding, and you will see significant problems in our area for fixing that roadway. We also have some good problems related to economic growth. Cedar Falls Industrial Park, we're starting to see some congestion in some of those intersections that we'll have to upgrade and improve. And then, when we look at our safety projects north of our area, where we've had significant accidents and fatalities, all of those take state investments. So, if the state's going to continue to be a partner in transportation, we're gonna have to get off the dime and actually start to improve our revenue outlook going forward. One other piece to that, 15 budget at the federal level basically zeroes out transportation funding. The Iowa DOT is planning on nothing in FY15 from the federal government for transportation for two reasons. The inability of Congress to act. It's no secret, it's a do-nothing Congress. So, transportation's no different in that respect. They've done almost nothing there. And in fact, they went into the general revenue and have borrowed money for the transportation program rather than to fund it with the gas tax. So, we're facing basically a zero-sum proposition there, and the Iowa DOT is planning that way. So, as a state, if we don't decide we want to keep Iowa open for business and invest in the infrastructure and good roads that we've all come to expect, that will hurt our economic growth in the future. And so, I know the governor is sensitive to this. He's having ongoing conversations during the fall interim. And I think if we can look at our transportation funding as it's not a Democrat or a Republican answer, but it's an Iowa answer to invest in that infrastructure, I think that may be a surprising issue that we could actually accomplish something on in this session. I think it would be good for our economy.
Perfect. Jeff, thank you very much. We've taken up about almost 45 minutes of our session, and we haven't got to questions. So, I know there's a couple of department heads that have questions, but let's open it up to counsel first. Mayor, Mr. Welper.
I think probably the single most biggest problem that we share with other cities is the 411 fund. I remember in a paper, quote, maybe a couple of years ago, a representative or senator from the Iowa City area didn't see as that a state problem. They saw it as a city problem, that if you don't have the revenue, all you have to do is raise taxes. Even if you're able to have the state agree to their promise and come across with the money that they said they would pay, Iowa is not the only one that has this problem. Other states are facing the same thing. Do you think that the pension fund needs to be reformed?
So, I think it's not appropriate to compare Iowa's pension systems to Detroit, to Illinois, to California. We actually have some of the best-run pension systems in the country. 411, for example, out of the four state pensions, has the best funded ratio. So, even compared to Iowa pensions, it's actually the best performing, and last year showed a 20% plus return on those investments. So, no, I don't believe that we have to radically alter the promise of economic security for those who have earned it over a career in police and fire work. The problem with the current approach to Iowa's pension is the state legislators have had the ability to say, well, this year, we're not going to put our contributions in. And the other states had those problems, too, right? They either didn't put their contributions in, or they did even worse. They scooped what was already there and used it for other things. Thankfully, we haven't done that in Iowa, and I don't support that. But we are approaching the point where if we don't keep our promise while we have healthy surpluses and the systems are sustainable because the funded ratios reveal that to us, then we will have problems. And my point is, while we can do something about it, let's do it. Let's be responsible decision-makers and ensure that that's still there.
So, what is the consensus of the legislature? Are they agree with you or not?
Well, I found it interesting. Here's some evidence. At the end of the session last year, the House put in an omnibus spending bill of roughly about 320 million total, about 120 million for two pensions in Iowa, P-O-Rs and the judges' system, with no other reform ideas. That's also a position that was supported by a Republican auditor who's now left the state, but is very well-respected, David Vaughn, and the treasurer, Michael Fitzgerald, a Republican and a Democrat, actually went on Iowa Public Television and said, the responsible thing for Iowa to do right now with our surplus is to invest back into our pensions. I've shared with the 411 example that if we do that, it's actually a dollar-for-dollar property tax reduction as well. It's the cleanest way to actually get property tax relief, even though, you know, we did a large property tax relief bill as well. So, to me, we're not Detroit, we're not Illinois, we're not California. Those analogies don't apply in Iowa. But if we don't keep up our promises as a state, you guys have done your work, we need to do ours. If we do that, then our pensions are sustainable far in the future.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Is the, did you say the backfill on the 411 is a 3.9% per year?
3.79%.
Okay. Is that codified, or that, it's suggested?
Yeah, it was originally in standings, which, for us, that means you have to take a vote to remove it. That was done over time. And then, it became an annual appropriation. The last appropriation, I think, was $500,000 a couple of years ago. Today, it's zero. But the original pension system in '94, the state promised to put in 3.79% of the annual requirement. That promise has never been kept, which means today, there's about $50 million less that the state should have put in that it did not.
Yeah, I think the other thing, too, to remember, in the last session, there was a three-year plan proposed by the Senate Democrats for about 19, almost 20 million dollars. That proposal passed the Senate, and this is for 411, but was stripped in the House Republicans' proposal. And then, you know, the property tax piece went to Conference Committee. That did not get into it. So, financially, there would have been $20 million that the state could have invested in, which, based on, you know, we should be.
And I think you can take some comfort in knowing that both of those votes were bipartisan support. Senate bill passed wide margin, and it was 43 to 7, and the House similarly when they sent their omnibus bill over. So, I think there's room for agreement on what to do, and I think there's actually a consensus that our funds are managed very well. We just need to make sure the state maintains.
And I would just touch on that, too. I agree with Jeff on some of the points, and our funds are managed well. That's not really the point. The point is, you know, how do we fund it to the place where, according to the promises that we made many years ago, it gets back to that. And I would just add, you know, those promises weren't kept by both Republican and Democratic legislatures, so it really isn't an issue in that respect. And I think there's some discussion on both sides of the issue as far as how much should the state be putting in and how much should be tweaked within the proposals of the specifics of the contracts and, you know, what can we do there? Is there anything we can do within cities? Do you guys have any leeway there to adjust those contracts and talk about what's fair, you know, in Iowa compared to, you know, private sectors and compared to other states, too? So, I think all those things are on the table. I do think there's willingness to look at it this year and try to get something done, but as far as it being just the one side, how much is the state putting forth, I think there's other issues on the table to be discussed also.
I think until we do something with collective bargaining, our ability to change contracts are pretty limited, if not zero.
Right.
And I also think that that view wasn't reflected in the House bill that actually came over. It was basically, here's 120 million in state money for two pension systems with none of those reform discussions. So, we're open to all of that, but I'm of the belief that complex subjects are not the legislature's strong point, right? So, you probably experienced that at your level. And to me, the really simple solution for what ails those retirement funds right now is the fact that the state has continued to back out of their promises. And I disagree, Mr. Welper, with the person that you quoted from Iowa City, that the state shouldn't be a partner. If that's the case, then all we need to do is say it's no longer a state pension, it's up to you and the employees to work it out on your own in the individual cities. And you know what? That wasn't really successful. There were a lot of cities that didn't make prudent fiscal decisions and got in trouble. So, I see the retirement funds that are state funds as similar to education policy. We can smooth out the differences in the ability of cities to raise property taxes. We know that there's differences there. And in this policy, it's no different than education. We want to make sure that you're not competing over that next officer because of the retirement benefit package, and therefore, we're not driving up budgets at the local level because of that. So, there's an overall state benefit for the way that we do it right now, and I think we should maintain that.
Next question?
Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Just two quick questions. Senator Danielson, you mentioned the zero funding in 2015 for federal highway funding.
That's what the Iowa Department of Transportation is planning for, zero.
Just out of curiosity, what kind of money are we talking about there?
That's about a billion and a half.
Okay. And then, the other quick question I had is, I've heard Representative Pressig mention in the past the number of school districts we used to have and how that's shrunk by a large number. And Senator Danielson, you mentioned about the regionalization of EMS, which I like the sounds of that. Is there ever any -- Is there ever any discussion down there about regionalizing state government, about getting away from our ninety-nine counties? I always ask the governor that, whatever.
Yeah, it does occur, but until it gets to the person that doesn't want to have that occur, then that's where it ends. I mean, in Blackhawk County, we are doing a regional thing, our E-nine-one system. I think that should be replicated across the entire state. It would save taxpayers significant dollars. So, and, you know, with regard to some of the things that the counties are doing, we just got through, got the mental health system, and I think Blackhawk County's, there's like seventeen counties that have joined together to help reduce costs. And I think any discussion is a possibility down the road. You know, I've heard discussion between, I don't know, the two cities don't, I don't know if they agree totally, but, you know, fire and police, you know, that they can do that. So, and there's other cities that could look at those issues. It's just how that can all be put together. And, you know, the bottom line of what you're doing here and what we're doing down in Des Moines is, how does it benefit Iowa taxpayers? And, you know, I think that's kind of the test that we should apply to these issues.
So that's something that's probably gonna have to come from the bottom up rather than the top down?
Yeah, and we prefer that in some areas. So I chair the efficiency committee, that ever since the recession of oh-nine, the state every year has gone in and looked at places that it can save its own cost. The first year, we looked at a reduction in state employees by about fifteen-hundred through a retirement incentive package. We also went in and consolidated a lot of our IT technology servers that were in every closet and said, "We don't need all of this, let's save some money." Today, the state is saving roughly three-hundred million dollars a year, five years later, because of those efforts, and those are year-over-year savings that we're not now paying for. This year, we had our interim study committee again to just keep examining where we can squeeze more efficiency out of state government. And in this report this year, I've actually asked for ideas from the Association of Counties and the League of Cities, where the state can come in and maybe help as a capital partner or as an operational partner and do some regionalization. You're seeing that in some areas. Charles City, for example, has a regional transportation facility where school, local roads, the DOT are all co-located with salt and mechanics, and then they can save money over the long haul because there's people there to do the work. Doesn't necessarily have to be the same color shirt, right? Any one of those departments can work on those trucks equally. I think we need to do more of that, and we'll look for those ideas in this session in the efficiency bill again.
Thanks.
Just one really quick question, or something to think about in the near future. One of the programs that you created, which the city has tapped into Noel and his offices and Rudy, is the six-fifty-seven-A process in being able to tear down residential properties that are somewhat blighted in communities. I was reading here on the ordinance, and it talks about, not ordinance, but the code, it talks about a building or structure primarily for residential purposes. And if that residential purpose, it could be shared with office space or some other type of commercial use, but the sole intent has to be for residential purposes, as I'm reading it. Can you take a look at in the future, the ability for us to tap into some commercial buildings? Some of the areas around the city of Waterloo, the north side, have buildings that have sat there, left for vacant. Anything can happen in some of those buildings. We can definitely work with the landowners to try to do something about it, but it would be nice to have those types of, that type of power and influence to be able to go in and get some of these buildings. And it's a public safety, anything can take place in some of those buildings, so having those tools to help us redevelop some of those areas, such as the six-fifty-seven-A process, would be great.
What was that code section?
Six-fifty-seven-A.
Six-fifty-seven-A.
Yeah. In ten seconds, it allows us to be able to go to court with landowners that hadn't taken care of their properties. We can get that back, void of all liens. So we're leading the state almost in that area, but it'd be nice to start taking a look at some of the larger commercial buildings.
I think that's something definitely we could take a look at. I do know that one of the projects that has been on the table for a long time, or programs, is the enterprise zone, and that's due to expire, and I don't believe that the department's willing to, the Economic Development Authority is really looking to cancel the enterprise zone language, and there was residential opportunities within that language. Former state representative, Will Jenkins, was the person that really worked hard for that, something that we use to try to take care of some of the blighted areas within our communities. They're looking to roll that in this year into the high-quality jobs programs, and so there's gonna be some additional discussions about that. I just got a pre-copy of some of the bills from the authority, and I was gonna make sure our Jim Walsh had not done.
And actually, Bill, Noel Anderson, one of the questions that he wanted to ask was about the enterprise zone, and we use that frequently and successfully in Waterloo. We don't want that to go away.
It's in jeopardy. So...
We certainly need the enterprise zone process to stay in place, but following up on what the councilman just said, we need the ability to either take down dilapidated properties or rehabilitate them, and the grayfield funding is important for the latter. We have buildings downtown Waterloo that have had empty space for forty, fifty, sixty years in the upper floors, and those buildings are gonna either have to be torn down by the cities eventually, or they're gonna have to be fixed up. I like to fix them up better than tear them down. I've done several already, and I'll do more, but I need grayfield to be actually funded, and it needs to be a random process or a first-come, first-served. The beauty contests do not work. You can't plan that far in advance, just like the reinvent Iowa process. Nobody has those plans ready to be able to present to the state and get a blessing on. Those processes take years to develop, and they put a deadline, say you can't start it until after you get an approval from us, well, they'll never start.
So you prefer an automatic trigger, if you qualify, do the work?
Yes. If it meets the criteria, it either goes in a randomized process, like they do now. The Department of Cultural Affairs runs a nice fair lottery, nobody's ever had a chance to complain about it because they do such a good job with it. That's fine. Whatever amount of money the state can spend, it's randomly dispersed to projects that qualify. They don't pay out these credits until they're earned.
How many of those projects do you have potentially?
I've probably got six or eight projects ready to go right now. I was turned down on some on the last time around, and I'd love to take you guys on a tour of them. There's three of them underway right now, but I've got three or four more that I just can't do.
What's the payback on that, Joe?
For me or for the state? For me, it's nothing.
Well, I think that's an important point, especially the historic tax credits. We actually have a positive ROI at the state level. We evaluated them, and it's one of the few incentive programs that has a positive return on investment.
And grayfield works well with the historic, but they don't compound. Your grayfield credit comes down quite a bit after you take out the other credits, but it's something.
You know Logan Plaza wouldn't be part of that, would it, by chance? Councilman Hart?
I don't mean to hijack the meeting, sorry.
It would be nice.
So what's the major impediment to the, once you've gone through all your due process and you believe it's time to tear something down, what's the impediment at that step?
Getting clear title to it, and that's what we've been using six-fifty-seven for, and we can do it on residential, we just need the legislation to be tweaked a little bit to include properties that have a commercial element. They're abandoned most of the time by the owners, there's nobody around, but we can't get clear title to it.
I'll sit down with you.
And it's a no-cost thing for the state, too.
Let us say, I mean, it's a little bit in the weeds, it's important, we'll get us that information, but I think in general, this delegation, in a bipartisan way, has supported the economic development programs that grow our communities in the places where we already have infrastructure. Cedar Falls and their downtown district, you are seeing tremendous growth in your downtown area, and in those places where you're not seeing it, but there's infrastructure and dilapidated buildings, we've been supportive of grayfields, brownfields, any of the enterprise zones. But you need to know they are in jeopardy. We actually passed a bill in a bipartisan way that would've improved some of those programs, and the governor vetoed some of the funding for that. So it's not an easy get, if you will, in terms of a priority, but we're committed to it, and we'll continue to advocate for it next year.
I don't think the governor'd do that again. Nobody can ever predict, but I don't think he'd do it again. There were circumstances last time, when shame on us, we just didn't bring it to his attention on time. So hopefully, if you guys can pass it again this time, it'll go through.
Maybe with a shorter list, we'll actually get it done.
We can pass it again at past fifty, you know?
He was just busy vetoing, and a pen kept going.
I share your pain, there were a few things I worked on.
Okay, guys, I'm gonna try to cut things off, I think we have another work session that's starting right now, but let's, while we are, you know, and...
Stick around!
I thought you were gonna ask us to help with pitbull legislation or anything like that.
Zip it! Well, you know, I, again, guys, it's difficult to voice my appreciation for all of you to come in. I think after we get rolling and we start getting questions, maybe we should take more time on questions next time and less time on introductions, because the questions are what is on everybody's mind. So, thank you for coming, and thanks to all the council and department heads for coming. I think it's a great session. Good luck to all of you, Walt, and your ambitions. Good luck to you, and good luck to all of you guys, and thank you very much for coming and sharing your thoughts with us, and maybe we'll have some other conversations outside of this, particularly on some of the issues that we talked about, Jeff. We need pension, we need that input on pensions.
Mayor, if the staff give you a list of questions or something, maybe we can shoot them over to them.
No, I do not, I do not. If anybody has questions for any of the legislators that they would like asked, you can get them to me, and I will make sure that I forward them to them, and we can get them asked or answered via email. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Counsel, let's go ahead, and we don't need to adjourn and read adjourn because we're already in session, but our four-thirty work session regards something that all of you have just been dying to know more about, which is fat, soil, and grease. But in fact, it's something that we, it is an incredibly important piece of all of our water quality issues that we've been talking about, our issues with EPA, et cetera, et cetera. This is an integral part of that. It's an entire ordinance that we're going to be asking you eventually to draft, so this is something that you need to be aware of, and as informed as we can get you on, and this is the beginning of that process, so it's not yourself out. All right, play.
Well, thank you for allowing us to present this tonight, and I love presenting wastewater Ms. Cole. She just, it excites her to no end.
Been waiting all day for this, Larry.
That's right. Brief history of what we're doing is, Clean Water Act naturally was passed in the early seventies, and this portion of what's going on with the Clean Water Act. The EPA does an inspection of our facilities every five years, and involved in three of those. The first two, we got outstanding, the last one, we got notice of possible violations of our N-PDS permit. And one of the things that was on there was the C-MON program, which was a program that EPA introduced in two thousand, and it was suggested, you know, or proposed that people use it, some did, most didn't. But in two thousand and ten, in our inspection, they gave us a notice of possible violation for not having a C-MON program. We're gonna be coming to you in the next several months with several parts of this program. The FOG program is the first step, it's the fats, oils, and greases. We have a PowerPoint presentation we do overhead, but we ran kinda late today. We had a meeting with Craig Clark, and Bob Bamsley, and Mark, and myself, and Brian, and we had to tweak it just a little bit, and when we did, it ran us really short of time getting them printed out. But basically, if we look at the FOG program, or the fats, oils, and grease program, what we're talking about is grease traps or grease interceptors. And this is a requirement by the federal government to have an ordinance in place, an effective ordinance in place, that allows us to see that they are properly taken care of, proper maintenance, that type thing, and not be putting, but we're looking at a hundred parts per million of fat, oil, or greases into the wastewater system. This is regulating naturally mostly food establishments, there are, everything associated with it is a food establishment. There is a list of establishments that we are recommending. The main discussion this afternoon was places like churches. Are we gonna require them? In our ordinance that we've presented, they are required. We based this ordinance off of a proven ordinance from another city that uses this ordinance, plus several other cities have copied off their ordinance. It's proven to work, it's been tested, it's legal. Again, we can finesse this ordinance any way you wish. If you don't want, say, churches in there, we can take that out, but as the ordinance stands, and as the way the EPA guidelines read, it would be any food establishment. It also defines the grease interceptor sizing and requirements. The main thing that we have, we have a grease trap inspection program, but it's not adequate to meet EPA guidelines. For the past twenty years or so, I don't know the exact dates, the Blackhawk County Health Department has been doing the grease trap inspections. The problem is, they never open the grease trap up to actually inspect it. They just, you know, ask you if you had it cleaned, when was the last time you had it cleaned, and that type of thing. This program requires that we actually meet certain standards and that we actually inspect the grease trap itself. So that's one of the things we're going to have to do under this ordinance, and again, that's with the equipment. We have to provide legal authority to the POTWs for regulating any pollutants that causes interference at the POTW. Fats, oil, and greases, I don't know, I know some of you saw here a month or so ago about the one they had in England, it was fifteen tons or whatever, plugging up a sewer line. That's excessive, but we do have a lot of plugged sewer lines due to fats, oils, and greases. They can cause overflows, sanitary sewer overflows, which is prohibited. So the forty CFR, Code of Federal Regulations regulates these type things and makes it illegal to cause obstruction. And it's up to the municipality themselves to enforce this regulation. It's up to them to decide how they will force the regulation. Again, I'm trying to follow this PowerPoint, and it's telling us that a fog is a liquid or solid material composed primarily of fat, oil, and grease that originates from animal or vegetable sources, by products of food processing and preparation. Thirty to forty percent of what we eat is fog. I'm sure everyone's happy to know that thirty to forty percent of what you eat is fats, oils, and greases. The fogs... enter the sewers during the cleanup process, and that's basically as kitchen utensils are being washed, or even, say, the dishes that you ate off of at that establishment is being washed, then that grease from that goes into the sewer system. And by ordinance, it's supposed to be trapped and not allowed into the sewer system. Again, fog and solid particles accumulate in the sewer pipe. Some of us have artery problems, and we know about this, and eventually can cause backups or overflows. Some places will claim, and I'm doing something that I hate. Every time I do anything, I'm saying, "Uh, uh." Pardon me for that, because I don't like that. Some places will claim that we don't have any grease, so we just need, we don't need a grease trap because we're a coffee shop. This will give you a perspective that 2 percent milk will have 20,000 milligrams per liter of fat. Ice cream, 150,000, and whole milk, 37,000. So you, people don't associate with some of the things that we eat as being, having fats in them or oils. They do. Again, it says, "We don't have any fries. We're just a deli." There are lots, a deli has a lot of meat products that they're slicing, and you end up washing the equipment. There's just all kinds of things that make up this. Fats, oils, and greases. We are looking at an inspection program, naturally, that will be operated by the city, we believe. We will also have a program to educate all the waste haulers that we have to make sure that you're in compliance. They will be actually certified by the department, or else they won't be allowed to dump in our sewer system. We're gonna do that for two reasons. Is because it helps us in our inspection program, and it also helps us to keep track of the number and how many places are being cleaned by name, by location, by amount. The part of the inspection that the waste hauler will do, there are certain things you have to inspect on a grease trap to make it suitable for use or make it legal. They will be doing that because we may not be inspecting these every month, or every week, or every year, or we'll expect yearly at least, but we don't know about in-between times yet. It's gonna, we're gonna have to establish a program that tells us that you're a high user, that you're gonna have to clean your system once a month. Or maybe you're a mom and pop shop, that you may not need to clean it for once a year. But we'll take the information that we gain from the waste haulers and use it in our program. Fog causes nearly 50 percent of all sanitary sewer overflows. That's, I won't disagree with that. There, it is a large or two sanitary sewer overflows. The SSOs cause raw sewage to back up into homes and businesses and flow into nearby lakes and streams. That, that's another statement that is true. That's why this falls under CMON and falls under the Clean Water Act. It also creates the need, increased, need for increased sewer maintenance. We actually spend time now doing what we call restaurant runs, that we, it's a preventative maintenance type program, where we go out and actually, in certain locations, will run that line on a regularly scheduled basis, because we know that if we don't, it will plug with grease. And that creates problems downstream. What we're trying to do in this, here, is we're transferring the maintenance costs and point of origin. We are. We look at the fact that, why should a homeowner pay for an activity that a business should be, should be part of their business plan? That they should be maintaining their system, and they're discharged to a point that's acceptable in our sewer system. Next thing is, we want to ensure proper disposal of fog waste. That goes into our program where we will license all of our haulers. If they are not licensed and they do not fill out the proper paperwork, we will not accept their wasteload. Next page tells you who should fall under the municipal fog ordinance. And again, this is what's been suggested. This is what's been proven in other cities and towns. This is something that, we're asking you to approve this as this list. If you have a problem, like I say, once again, we had quite a long discussion this afternoon about churches, because they are not a regular fog producer. It's only intermittent. We still believe that we should look at that strongly. But if the council says, "We don't want to do that because they produce a minimum amount, because maybe it's only for funerals," or something like that, it's understandable. Part of the fog program is the outreach. And what, once we adopt the ordinance, one of the things we'll be doing is, we will be, it says speaking engagements. We started an education program for everyone affected. We will also try to get more involved in, in the neighborhood associations. It's, it's a good way to reach out to groups of people from various parts of the city. We will, we will start trying to educate the people more as to why this is happening and why we're doing it. It's not just, "We're gonna do it because we can." We are going to ask for authority to conduct inspections. We have some authority now, but under the new ordinance, it gives us authority to come in and ensure that you are in compliance with the city ordinance.
So Larry, the first check, first check that we make is a $50 fee. And if they're not in, well, okay, then we find something potentially wrong. Then we go back in, and that second check or follow-up check, we don't charge on that one?
I'd have to read exactly what the ordinance says. I apologize for that. There is a fee schedule set in there.
Yeah.
But I don't know if it says we don't charge for the second inspection.
Yeah.
I, do you remember if it says that?
Well, we can look. It's small in comparison to the whole thing, but I was just wondering.
We don't want to, I mean, we are, we are basically mandated to do this. But we want to take the approach that Waterloo's customer-friendly.
Right.
We're not gonna go in and shut your business down and everything else. Just come in one day and say, "You're out of compliance. You're shut down." We want to work with people to bring them into compliance. And most of them will come into compliance real easily.
Right.
There'll be some that will be difficult. That's the ones we'll work with.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's not, it's not our intention to put anybody out of business or cause a financial hardship.
No, I was just wondering why you didn't charge that second. But, but don't worry about it. It's small.
I'd have to read that again right, right away, Quentin. And I, I apologize. I don't know this whole ordinance off the top of my head. We've gone through it and gone through it, but.
No, you're fine.
With everything else we're trying to get done, I just can't tell you that part.
No, that's fine.
I can find it for you, though.
Yeah.
This is our.
They're saying we charge $50 for routine scheduled inspections, no fee for compliance or unscheduled inspections.
Yeah.
We want to go back that far. You can keep going. That was just, just.
Pardon me?
You can keep going. That was just a real quick question.
We're gonna get to it here in a minute.
Okay.
Again, this, this PowerPoint was finessed late this afternoon. So, we'll do the initial inspection, meet with the manager or owner. We will tell them, we will give them information as far as best management practices. We will establish a proper cleaning schedule. Again, the initial inspection will only be a recommendation for proper cleaning schedule. We will not know that until we actually have inspected the trap, our interceptor, at least twice. Otherwise than that, we're just kind of taking an educated guess. I've already gone over that we will certify the grease haulers. We will keep the records as far as the maintenance on the interceptors and the grease traps for a period of three years as required. There will be an annual scheduled inspection. At that time, we'll, we'll ask for your records. That's where you have a grease trap or an interceptor. Follow-up inspections to see if you have made efforts to come in compliance will be unannounced. You will be asked to either give us written documentation showing that you have a licensed plumber, say, who has brought your trap up to city code or city standards. If not, you'll be asked to open it and let us inspect it ourselves. Here again, they're saying grease trap interceptor compliance, 25 percent rule, wherever three months, whichever comes first. I, I won't disagree with that. I won't say that I agree with that. I think we need to develop our own program, because small shops or small restaurants that are not high-volume users may not need an inspection every three months. Larger ones who produce a lot of fried foods and that type stuff may need it every three months or more often. I think that's a part of the program that we need to put together. And, but it's something, I think it's gonna take some research as we get into this. This next part explains how you check a grease trap or an interceptor, as, as to what the regulations are, the 25 percent rule, and what will determine if it needs to be cleaned or not. The following page is a, what the grease haulers will be trained in by our department. We have the program for training them on all the information presented here. A lot, some of the, some of the most common ones is outlet tees are missing. That's something that, over the years, I have seen personally making the, the trap operable or not accepted. They will be required to do all this and sign off on it for each time they go to a place and clean a grease trap or clean a interceptor. They will then again return a form to us stating that they have made these inspections, which, once again, will help us where we won't have to do as many inspections as we would normally do. The next page says ACT, ACT is a data management software. We don't use that. We use Cartograph, but it provides us the ability to maintain contract, contact information, inspection dates, types and conditions of grease removal device, ability to generate story reports, NOVs, inspection forms, calendars for scheduling, or whatever. There's, ACT is a different software than we use, but we already have the software in place, and we're using it for our CMON program. And we feel it would be best, better to stick to one program than having two or three programs out there trying to interface with each other. Funding. Water reclamation charge is $50 for routine scheduled inspection. No fee for compliance or unscheduled inspection. The unscheduled inspection would be if we were to come out and find out, say, that that discharge tee was off your unit and missing. And we'd say, within 30 days, we want to see you have that fixed. We would come back, and at that time, again, they will either have to give us documentation that they have done it, or have to show us physically that they've done it. Not a lot of paperwork involved there. It's primarily a man-hour thing. We, we lose some time, but again, we're not out to put somebody out of business. We're just trying to bring them into compliance. So we are in compliance. We have the list of fines that we're suggesting for the first, second, third offense. We have talked real, real briefly about treating grease traps or interceptors as a pre-treatment unit and issuing a permit like we would do with any company that has a pre-treatment facility. This gives us a better handle on where they're located at, how they're being maintained. It's, it's just all of that process. There is an annual fee. Again, this is, will be council's decision. This is what we've suggested is a $200 a year for grease traps or no device. Grease traps basically, we talked with Craig Clark about this today, and that, that is something that we need to finesse a little bit, because some places, it's not possible to put in an interceptor. We have a place in question right now where they cannot put in an interceptor, outside interceptor. And the only way, I believe, and Craig can tell me if I'm wrong, the only way that they would be able to put anything would actually be a grease trap inside the building. So, there are some issues that we need to work through. And there will be issues all, all through this process. We can talk about reduced sewer line maintenance. Once again, we have a routine program of certain areas that we go around and clean the lines because they are grease-filled. We use the grease for biogas production at the lagoon. The lagoon likes it. It increases our biogas. We in turn sell the biogas and get something out of waste once again. And I see that everybody is really excited right now. I see.
Well, Larry, I tell you what.
So we've talked enough.
Well, and, and we're just about at the end. We got another committee meeting, but could, could we sum it up by?
Sure. Well, we're asking, I'm asking tonight that you review the ordinance as we've written it. And I would like to bring it to council for vote next meeting. I would like to have it in place January 1, the ordinance in place. And at that time, we can start doing data collection and that type thing. And actually start the enforcement July 1. That gives us time to finesse some of the things, manpower, how we're going to do it and everything else. But I think it is very important that we get this passed as quickly as possible. Yes, sir.
Do you have sort of a census or a database of where you're going to, of what businesses that you're going to look at? And do you get like a software of how you're going to manage these, these restaurants?
This is, that's.
Fog producers?
We have, the Cartograph program will allow us to enter this information. Who do we look at first? Probably our highest grease producers. We know that from past experience that our highest grease producers are not maintaining their traps adequately. That, that's what we're trying to solve here. They are maintaining them, but not to an adequate point. They are not meeting 100 milligram per liter standard by any means.
So do people that have a high rate of FOGs, do they get charged? So do people that have a high rate of FOGs, do they get charged a different rate for using our sanitary system?
Unfortunately, no.
Some cities do that?
I don't know of any. I know there's all kinds of programs that if you don't comply, that they will fine you or whatever, but it's for, is allowing you to continue to violate the code by simply paying a higher fee. I'm not sure that that would even be legal.
Jim? If you jump in, I think the EPA would frown on that and DNR wouldn't like it either because what you're doing is basically saying you can pay to speed. You know, you can violate the law if you want to pay some extra money. I don't think they'd like that. The rule is you have to keep the fats, oils, and grease out of the system.
Is there some type of emulsification agent that would neutralize some of these fats?
There is emulsification agents out there that do that, but they're very unfriendly to concrete pipe. We had a company that came to town in the mid-'90s and was selling everyone this emulsion that goes in there to break the grease up and all that. And what we found out was like out at crossroads, it was eating the bottom out of our concrete pipes. Perkins was a good example. It ate the pipes up, something terrible out there. We do not encourage that. It's not good for our sewer system, and I don't know, in all reality, if we got down to it, I don't know that it is legal to inject that into our sewer system because of damages it does.
Yeah.
Ron, you had a question?
Well, I think Bob just touched on my question. People with septic tanks are encouraged to dump a box of enzyme in there periodically. Is that something we all could do to reduce it? Is it exactly what you're saying? You don't want us to do that?
At the treatment plant of, well, we get into this deep, we have to maintain a proper food-to-microorganism ratio in our aeration basins. If we put too much bacteria in there, they do crazy things like endogenous respiration, which means that they become cannibals. They will start eating each other. It makes it a real mess. No, we don't encourage people to dump enzymes.
In other words, no.
Into our system.
Larry, of the 13 facilities you've got identified here, different types of facilities, I mean, would 25% of them be aware of what we're even talking about, or are all of them aware of it but just not dealing with it today? Or how big a shock is this going to be to these folks?
It shouldn't be a shock to most people. I mean, this is not something that we just dreamed up today. If you're in the food service industry, any type of trade shows, I've been to a couple of trade shows in Des Moines, they talk about things like this and the need for it. The only one would be questionable would be possibly maybe daycare centers and churches. That would be the two that I don't think they would have a lot of exposure to it, but then again, when they go for a permit to do a daycare center, whatever, the building department will inform them of the need of a.
And most of your restaurants have the grease traps and so forth already?
Yes, sir.
And if you're involved in any way in the food business, you know all about this.
Okay.
Very good. I would encourage everybody to please look this over, please look over the drafts of the ordinances and the resolution that we're going to stop, going to ask you to affirm and get with Larry or Mark or Bamsey or Jim or somebody if you have questions about it. It is incredibly important that we move forward with this soon. So we've been working on getting this to you. We'd like to have gotten this to you earlier, but it's taken a long time to get this put together.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Larry. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Larry. Thanks, Mark.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council on Monday, December 2nd, if anybody can actually believe that it's December. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Walper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Thank you. If all of you would please join me in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer, please. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Dennis Clark, General Manager of the Waterloo Waterworks. Dennis, please.
Please join me in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to approve and amend it agenda, and that is the deletion of number 12. Also with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes from November 25th regular session.
Take it. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, place, on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B9. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment schedule, which we read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $2,018,261.33, 2,018,261.33.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file an instruct city clerk to open and read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number three?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number three, the Orange School Sanitary Sewer Extension Project? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Getty?
Opposed?
Yes.
The motion carries, and the hearing is now open.
Mr. Jones?
Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number three?
Yes.
There were none. Mr. Greenwood?
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against
Yes.
item number three, the Orange School Sanitary Sewer Extension Project?
Mr. Schmidt?
A second time?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Walper?
Second.
Yes.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item?
Mr. Hart?
All in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Ms. Cole?
Opposed?
Yes.
The motion carries, and the hearing is now open.
Mr. Getty?
Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number three?
Yes.
There were none. Mr. Jones?
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against
Yes.
item number three, the Orange School Sanitary Sewer Extension Project?
Mr. Greenwood?
A second time?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Hart?
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Aye.
Second.
Opposed? Madam Clerk, please. The motion carries.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Walper?
I'm sorry, roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Getty? Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Walper? Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hart? Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Cole? Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. Cole?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Yes.
Second.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file an instruct city clerk to open and read bids
Mr. Jones?
and refer to city engineer for review.
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Greenwood?
All in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Schmidt?
Opposed?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mr. Walper?
Ladies and gentlemen, 12 bids tonight on this project with an estimate of $421,270.
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, don't get carpal tunnel here, opening bids.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
The first bid is from Hurst &amp; Sons Contractors, Inc. Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
And the bid bond is for 5%. Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
And the total base bid is for $433,274. I think that's all. 433,274.00. And then there are some alternatives, but I won't read those because they're not readable, really.
Okay.
They're not tolerable. The next bid is from Holland Contracting of Forest City, Iowa. And the bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $469,427, 469,427.00. The next bid is from Riley Construction Company of Ashen, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $472,997, 472,997.00. The next bid is from Denver Underground Ingating, Inc. of Denver, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $274,218, 274,218.00. The next bid is from Dave Schmidt Construction Company of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $308,180.40, 308,180.40. And the next bid is from Perk Tobin Construction, Inc. of Al Burnett, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $406,558, 406,558.00. The next bid is from Veeth Construction Corp. of Cedar Falls, Iowa. And the bid bond is for 5%. Sorry, I'm switching gears. We dulled my knife. The total base bid is for $321,361, 321,361.00. The next bid is from Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa. And the bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $398,880, 398,880.00. And the next bid is from Baker Concrete and Excavating of Waverly, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $428,874, 428,874.00. And the next bid is from Chick Fry Excavating of Dubuque, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $434,624.58, 434,624.58. The next bid is from Summers Enterprise, Inc. of Masonville, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $344,488.52, 344,488.52. And the final bid is from Rickliff's, Rickliff's Escavating LTD of Anamosa, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5%. And the total base bid is for $273,405, 273,405.00.
Throw the fence in.
Get a grease trap with that. Let's do resolutions, please, four, five, and six.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt, please.
Item number four, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the 2014 budget of the Waterloo Waterworks and authorize city clerk to file said documents with the Blackhawk County Auditor. Item number five is a motion approving change order number five for a net increase of $11,140.40 for work performed by Riley Construction Company, Inc. of Ashen, Iowa for the fiscal year 2013 Dry Run Creek Gate Well Replacement, contract number 814, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And item number six is adopting a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Riley Construction Company, Inc. of Ashen, Iowa at a total cost of $496,099.40 for the fiscal year 2013 Dry Run Creek Gate Well Replacement, contract number 814, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond.
Second.
Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding four, five, or six?
No.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Next three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole?
I move we approve change order number two for a net decrease of $23,748.50 for work performed by Veeth Construction Corp. of Cedar Falls for the FY 2012 C-Cor Railroad Spur, contract number 794, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. I move we adopt a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Veeth Construction Corp. of Cedar Falls at a total cost of $218,303.71 for the FY 2012 C-Cor Railroad Spur, contract number 794, and receive and file two-year maintenance bond. And nine is a resolution approving recommendation of award of contract to Frickson Brothers Excavation of Evansdale in the amount of $7,900 for demolition and site clearance services for 1019 Lafayette Street, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding seven, eight, or nine? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, item number 12 was deleted off of tonight's agenda, so that is the end of our regularly scheduled business, a very short agenda for tonight. I'm sure next week will be different. But it's time for oral presentations. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to mayor or counsel, please step to the microphone. Give us your name and address.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch, Waterloo. I see we're going to spend $32,000 on updating the chamber here, and I do agree with one thing, your lighting does suck. It ain't good in here. But I just, Carolyn said, when you've got an old house, you've got to keep it up, and I just hope that you guys keep the next year's budget so I can stay in Waterloo to keep my house up. It'll be 100 years old, and eight more years, so.
Very good.
It doesn't look it. Paul, could you give these copies, please? And the other question I got is, where are we going to come up with the $200 million to fix the sewer system in Waterloo?
Don't know, Jim. That's what, we're still trying to figure that out.
Yeah, I hope you do. And the things I passed out there was in the Courier Friday and letters to the editor, and this gentleman hit it right on the head.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
To receive and file oral comments in adjournment to executive session.
Second.
Mr. Walsh, are we adjourning properly?
Yes, per the agenda, the reason for the executive session is a discussion of litigation, and that's permissible pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5.1(c). You'll need a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
The motion carries, and we are adjourned.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all. We're adjourned to executive session. Thank you very much.